Do what?
Yeah. Video. Thank you.
And everybody else is going to give you all the work that's been done. I mean, I want to make sure everyone understands that there's been a ton of work done up until this point to help prepare both this and the surrounding communities for the response to COVID-19. So what I'm going to do is give you a little bit of the background on COVID-19, the disease, the virus, what it is, what it does, what it looks like, and some of the issues we're facing right now, mostly nationally but also locally. So COVID-19 is a disease that was first identified in a city called Wuhan in China. Wuhan is known as sort of the Chicago of China, if you could put it that way. They're an extremely large population in a small density area. And what happened was there were a cluster of what we call viral pneumonias, so patients with pneumonia that didn't respond to traditional antibiotic therapy and didn't have bacterial causes. And so there was a small cluster of them, and throughout the testing, the doctors are identified that this seems to be a new strain of a virus called the coronavirus. Now coronavirus, there are four human coronaviruses, which are what caused the common cold, and then there's SARS, which you've heard of in the past, and then MERS, which are two of the more scary pandemic-type coronaviruses. This is the newest version of the coronavirus. It comes from bats. It's actually a mutation of the SARS virus. And so the official name of the virus itself is SARS-CoV-2, or SARS coronavirus 2. And the disease itself is called Coronavirus Disease 2019, or COVID-19. As of this point, it's in over about 100 countries. It's categorized as a pandemic by the World Health Organization due to the fact that there is sustained person-to-person transmission. And that's one of the major criteria to escalate something from an epidemic over to a pandemic. I want to give you some facts on the actual severity of the disease. So a lot of this data comes from published information out of the first wave of ill people in China. So everything should be tempered with the fact that it's a different health system, it's a different patient population in the terms of higher density, higher rates of smoking, and sort of worse pollution. But there are areas of our country that are like that. Eighty or so percent of these cases are what are considered mild, and I think it's important to understand that mild means you have the flu. So if you've ever had the flu, the flu sucks. And so, yeah, the flu, for some people, was extremely severe, and eighty percent of them give you traditional flu-like symptoms.
So that's an official medical...
Oh, yeah.
The flu sucks.
The flu sucks, yeah. I tell my patients that all the time. You're going to feel like you're hit by a train for a few days and you'll be better. Thirteen or so percent require hospitalization. And so that means they either have a pneumonia that's making it difficult for them to breathe, difficult for their oxygen levels to be maintained without additional oxygen therapy, et cetera. And then four to five percent require intensive care in terms of that their breathing is so bad that they need to be placed on artificial ventilation through a ventilator or something along those lines. The good news is most people recover. So there are a lot of people that are sick, and the disease itself takes two, three, four weeks to recover. But a majority of people recover, with a small percentage being deadly. So the mortality range, I'll show you in a second, but it's quoted as being anywhere from 1% all the way up to 5%, 7%. The important thing is that's an average across all age groups. The highest-risk populations are those in the over-60 range, as you see on the graph on your left, and especially the 80-plus population, and those with other, what we call comorbidities, so those with heart disease, diabetes, bad lung disease, et cetera. So those are two independent factors that increase your risk of actual death and severe illness. When we talk about a new virus or any sort of contagious disease, we plot it on a spectrum. So there's two important things to understand. One is, for each infected person, how many more people will you infect if gone unchecked? And so COVID-19 ranges in the 2-4 range, and that's the x-axis you see on the graph to your left, and then the mortality up on the y-axis. And so you can compare it to things like seasonal flu, which you see there, has about 0.1% mortality on average, and what's called an R naught of about 1, which is why it tempers off every year, because the R naught less than 1 means the disease will disappear. You see measles all the way on your right, not very deadly, but it does have an extreme virulence, and that it's very easy to transmit, compared to bird flu and MERS, which are extremely deadly but aren't easy to transmit. And this is why all of these previous sort of near-pandemics would come and go, whereas COVID-19 is causing all this commotion, is because it has a good virulence and a minor mortality rate, which is allowing it to spread throughout the world. Fatality, or what we call the case fatality rate, also changes by country, and I'm going to talk about that in a second. And it's usually due to the quality of the healthcare system, the quality of the preparedness, and the tempering and mitigation efforts that are done by those countries. So if you see on the right there, you have the number of confirmed cases going from top to bottom, and then the mortality on the right. So you look at China, that had a 3.9% mortality in the most amount of cases, and then you go down to somewhere like South Korea, that has a decent number of cases but a very low mortality rate. So I wanted to put this into real perspectives for you guys. So I went on Google last night and looked up your population. So 47,282, does that sound about right? Okay. So, and what the census told me was there's just under 5,000 people that are 65 or older. Does that sound about right? Okay. So let's assume 50% of people are infected, okay, at some point over the course of this disease transmission. That's about 23,000 people infected or 2,400 people over 65.
So, would you... Talk about that assumption of the 50% people infected.
Yeah. So it all goes to the sort of modeling of the epidemiologists, and it's not that 50% will come down with it tomorrow. It's that over the course of the pandemic's spread, 50% of people will become infected. So that number ranges from anywhere from 30% to 70%. And those are best estimations based on what we know about the R naught or the transmissibility of the virus itself. And so at the end of it all, we'll say, how many of the, what percentage of the population was infected? And if we essentially do very little, it would infect 50% to 60% of the population. So if we have 2,400 people over 65 that are infected, and we assume that 5% critical care that in terms of needing ICU beds, that's about 122 people over 65 that require ICUs, okay? In the city of Burleson, you have a couple hospitals here, and they do not have 122 critical care beds, all right? And so the point of all this, and again, these are raw numbers in terms of if you sat around and did absolutely nothing, this is what the situation would look like. We talked about this concept of flattening the curve, all right? So every disease follows a curve in terms of number of new infections, number of actively infected, and then eventually it peaks and falls back down. But there is a threshold that our healthcare system has in terms of not just pre-hospital, but hospital ability to take care of people. And the goal of all of the measures that we're talking about, when we talk about social isolation, social distancing, all these preventative measures, the goal is what's called flattening the curve. And the point of flattening the curve is even if you allow for the understanding that 60% of your people will get infected, if that occurs over a year as opposed to over a month, the healthcare system can take care of that, just in a longer period of time, all right? And so we talked about what are the measures that we can do. So we sort of joke around about social distancing, but the reality of it is that we should not congregate in large places, we should not congregate in six feet of each other, we should implement all the hand washing and cleaning, all the other sort of preventative techniques that we're talking about. And from a government perspective, there are some things you can do, as I've heard you're already sort of starting to do, and then from a preparedness and response perspective, we should continue the work we are. But it's important for people to know, there are a lot of people out there that think this is the flu, or that this is just like the flu. And people go to work with the flu, or they try to go to work with the flu. And it's important to understand that people who are sick should stay home. People who are at high risk should not go into large gatherings where they are likely to catch this or any other communicable disease. And people have to practice good hand hygiene, good common-sense techniques, otherwise the transmission will continue at a rate that we honestly don't really see that often. This is a graph of Italy. Okay, so on the left here is from the first number of cases back in early February, down in the blue. This is their number of cases diagnosed going down to, it was updated a few days ago, up until March 11. And plotted next to it is from our sort of first cases or so as well, and you notice that we follow a similar pattern here. The reason Italy gets brought up a lot is because Italy essentially ignored this until it was too late, all right? So they implemented a small quarantine in the north of Italy, and there was a hashtag going around about how Elon won't be stopped, and one of their mayors was walking around high-fiving people in the streets, and he's now in hospital with coronavirus. So the reason, again, for putting this up here is people think that the NBA and Disneyland and everything else are doing this due to media hype or pressure or something else. But the reality of it is it's not. This is an effort to flatten the curve of this disease, and we all need to understand that it's real, and it's not the flu, and if you blow it off, you will turn into another Italy. And so that is my doing room job, is to make sure everyone understands that. And the important thing to note with that is, all the things that we've been talking about, all the things that we've been preparing for, are the ways to flatten the curve, okay? So what are we doing from a medical perspective on the EMS side? So we're doing call screening through the 911 process. So if you call 911, you're getting screened for your risk in terms of international travel or known contacts. We have addresses in all of our communities flagged in our dispatch system. So if someone is being monitored by the health departments, we have knowledge of where they are, and if they call 911, we go in with full protective gear. We do in-person screening for those with signs of symptoms of respiratory infections. We go in with full personal protective equipment as needed. And right now in Burleson, you don't have any positive cases, and that's great. But unfortunately, it probably will not last. And by the time you have one positive severe case, which is usually what's required to actually get the test done, is for it to be a severe case, by the time you have one severe case, you do likely have a number of other patients in the community that are either mildly symptomatic and are going around spreading it, or are yet to be sort of identified. When we talk about our preparation and planning, there's things that we have ready in our back pocket for when or if the time comes. So things like low-priority patients being non-transported by EMS. So we, every time we have a situation like this, we have a number of people who call 911 who are actually relatively mildly sick and don't need to go to an emergency department that really needs to be saved for the high-QA patients. So we have processes where we can identify those low-risk patients and navigate them to alternate destinations, or instruct them to stay home and how to do self-mongering. One of the things that you probably heard during the declarations yesterday, as well as in some other states that are dealing with this, like Colorado and Seattle, and South Korea, talking about drive-through testing centers and other ways to get patients tested. And then, you know, the threat here with all of this is the personal protective equipment is, it's right now fine in terms of volume, but as we start seeing more and more patients, we have to find ways to get access to enough personal protective equipment to make sure our healthcare workers stay safe in order to take care of these patients. And then the last thing I wanted you to be aware of, and just so you have the knowledge of, there was a group that got together a number of years ago called the North Texas Regional Masked Critical Care Task Force. This is a group of physicians, healthcare leaders, and other individuals that came together and said, if we ever reach a point in our community where a pandemic is so bad that we're having to make decisions about who gets care and who doesn't, there's an entire plan in place that's been approved by the state that's there in case we ever need. So the name of the game is mitigation, okay? Even if you don't have cases here in the community, the goal is mitigation. You know, the whole toilet paper and water thing, I agree, it's panicked and it's ridiculous, okay? This is not a hurricane, it's not a tornado, you don't need to go out, you're not going to lose access to the grocery store, all right? But it's important for people to be prepared, and it does take a little bit of resources to stay home. If you're going to stay home for two weeks, it requires a lot. Now granted, 2020 is the perfect year to have a pandemic. I mean, I can pull up my computer that's in my pocket and order an entire grocery shop to my front door, and they can leave it there and go back, and that's great. And that's an important thing that we all need to understand, is you don't need to stockpile, because those services are probably not going to go away. Social distancing and isolation, as we talked about, it's not, it's not just as simple as hand washing. It is talking about closing large spaces, places where people are going to gather. You've seen probably the local, and Tarrant County, the city of Fort Worth issued their declarations yesterday. Fort Worth is doing a 250-person ban on gatherings, so any event that was 250 people or more has gotten canceled. And that's Main Street Arts Festival, probably Mayfest, all those other things that are going to happen are likely to be canceled. Things don't need to just be erased off the face of the earth. You can reschedule it till when we get through this, if this is something we will get through. Nonessential travel, that's a common one, you know, if you don't have to go outside of community, you don't need to. And then if you are in a central service or you are keeping things open, plan for six feet or so of space if possible. So if, you know, we were talking about a gym earlier, you know, every other treadmill is great, that's fine. If you've got cleaning equipment and hand sanitizer and all that other things, that's good. And then from, the important thing is for your high-risk groups to understand that if you don't really need to go out into the community for a while, it's probably for the best. You know, a lot of the data and a lot of the CDC recommendations talk about high-risk groups not congregating more than 10 people, all right? And so in the sense that if you're, even if you're the only high-risk person, you shouldn't go into a group of more than 10 people, which is like us. So just to be completely aware, that's sort of where we're at.
All right. First of all, thank you for coming and joining us this morning. We really appreciate it. Having your expertise here is invaluable to us. And I know I'll have a few questions, but I'll give others the floor first. Anyone have questions? So, in your, from your perspective, should other cities probably need to Fort Worth and go ahead and make their declarations?
So, the actual issuance of a declaration of a public health emergency, granted I'm not a political sort of person, but my understanding is what it really gives is the ability to move swifter than having to meet for city council meetings. That's sort of the big one. The fact that the president and then the governor have issued states of emergency helps us access things, like there's a thing called the Strategic National Stockpile. There's a Strategic National Stockpile for personal protective equipment. That's going to be a huge help to us as a community. Those will come through our racks, and so it's not necessarily down to the agency level, it's down to the regional level. We've got good involvement with those organizations to make sure that our local communities are getting the required equipment that they need. So I wouldn't give any advice about states of emergency, but I think that's a decision for you all to make.
And do you think it is, do you think it's time for all of our cities to issue prohibitions against the mass gathering, things like that?
You know, it depends. So Burleson, you guys, from what I've seen, you know, you are relatively even compared to Fort Worth, right? So there's plenty of homes that are spaced far apart, there's not the population density that something like Fort Worth has. And so in some respects, you're already better protected than some of the other sort of more urban cities. It really depends on if you look at your event calendar for the next three, six months, and look at how big they're going to be, and really, it's part population or part anticipated attendance, but it's also part density. You know, if you're going to have 100 people in a small space, I mean, they're not going to be able to be within, or, you know, armed to each other, they can't separate that far. It's probably a good idea to shut those down for now. Because if we've seen anything, you know, this is a novel, novel disease, but the concepts have existed for a long time, and we have people with the same disease that are showing us what not to do, right? So you put Italy compared to South Korea, so Italy chose to do very little, South Korea put the entire country on lockdown almost immediately. Now granted, we're not going to be able to implement Asian levels of quarantine, and it's just not feasible in the United States. But South Korea still has a lot of cases, but they're not seeing the mortality that other countries are. Italy right now is in absolute shambles with their healthcare system, and they're having to make extremely tough decisions that none of us want to have to make. And so they've implemented a full quarantine, but it's hard to do when the virus is out.
So, given what you said about, you know, if you have one confirmed case, then that tells you certain things about risk level, is that a time, is that indication that it's time to trigger some, you know, we're aggressive?
So, it's funny, so, you know, two nights ago Dallas came out with theirs, when they went from three to eight cases or whatever it was. And people sit and think, like, why would eight cases be a big deal? But eight cases is probably not just eight, and that's the hard part. When you look at the fact that 80% are mild symptoms, some people honestly just have cough cold, and the fact that it's winter, they'll assume that it's their normal cough cold congestion. And then on top of that, you know, there's actually data suggests not asymptomatic spread, what we call presymptomatic spread. So a couple days before you actually start developing symptoms, about a quarter of people are shedding the virus, which again adds to the transmission and why it's hard to keep a lid on things. And so people don't access the healthcare community until they're symptomatic. It's impossible to know beforehand that you're infectious. But the only way to prevent that infection is to implement all the measures that we've talked about before. It's extremely hard not to touch your face, I'll say that.
I'm trying to be mindful of that, as you sit up here.
Yeah. It's, my nose is itchy right now, and it's driving me crazy. And, you know, it's, it's hard, but, but, you know, these are, these are the tried and tested ways to get through it. I think the, from a long-term perspective, you know, me personally, I'd rather go down as the person who came in front of city councils and told them to shut everything down and had been wrong, than to have not made enough of an effort to inform people and have a widespread transmission in the community.
Okay. So Mayor, I got a question. What about Sunday church gatherings? I guess that would be discouraged.
So, whereas most cities have not put a ban on religious gatherings, they have essentially said, yeah, if your church is, you know, set up kind of like this one, and every seat's going to be full, yeah, you probably should look at having video tele, you know, teleconferencing services, same with workplaces and everything else. You know, again, being 2020, you can livestream whatever you want, you know? And so I absolutely agree, if you're in a mass gathering like a church or other houses of worship, I would start to, start to talk about how to, how to transition those to an at-home service, at least for the time being.
And I know some of our churches, a number of our churches have already got that.
Yeah.
Some have, and some have not. Okay.
Well, so I was going to, that was one of the questions I was going to ask to her too. So, the ban in Fort Worth, is it sort of extending to all events, sort of private?
All public and private events, all events and gatherings of 250 people or more. So it's not, it's not specifically special events, it is all gatherings.
All gatherings, okay. And inside of that, are they making any, any exceptions for events that implement different meeting policies or?
Nope. Spent an entire day at the EOC yesterday, and it is very clear. Everything is a recommendation except for the ban on 250 or more, and that is a declaration.
So just for unclear, would it be your recommendation that we institute a similar ban for the city boroughs?
I think putting some limitation on mass gatherings is a good idea, yes. To, to, so to be frank, and I don't have the graph with me, but there is a graph that shows, based on the number of patients in the community and the expected attendance of the event, what the percent likelihood is that someone in the event will have COVID-19. And the hard part is it's based on what we call homogenous data, so we have to assume that the patients are equally scattered throughout the community. Your risk in Burleson right now is extremely low, but if you look, if you look at the city of Burleson, or if you look at the city of Fort Worth, and you realize that you don't have what's called community transmission, which is the big sort of turning point in a pandemic, that's reassuring. But if you think of us as the DFW community, we have cases of community transmission in the community. And so it's, it would be silly for us to assume that someone doesn't drive from Johnson County to Collin County at least once a day, you know, it's something that happens. And so, you know, pretending that we have rules around our city borders is a...
Well, that's what I was going to make. We can't, we really should be careful not to just base our actions on what's happening within the city limits of Fort Worth, because so many of us work, or what's happening in city boroughs, because so many of us work in the city of Fort Worth, or in, you know, some people work in Dallas County, you know, all over the place. So you're right, we're not all contained within the city limits.
Yeah. As an example, late last night, the third case in Tarrant County was identified. That patient actually would have transmitted to them through the patient in Collin County.
Wow.
Through one of the patients in Collin County, they were what was called a close contact. So whereas it's not, it's technically considered travel-related, they have fun definitions about whether they can find the source or not. They know the source was travel-related, but it is community transmission. Someone in Collin County hung out with someone who lives in Tarrant County, transmitted the disease, that patient drove to Tarrant County, developed symptoms, and that was out there.
Right. I have one other question. So as I understand, and maybe we can speak to, if someone has symptoms that they are concerned about, what are the actions that they should take?
So, so the first thing for a patient to decide is how sick they feel, okay? And that's the decision everyone makes about how sick they are every day. So if they are having trouble breathing, if they are having trouble walking, if they feel like it's life-threatening emergency, then they should go to the emergency department, whether that's by ambulance or private vehicle, that's their decision. If they feel well enough that they don't need to go to an emergency department, and I do want to preface this with, some people who decided to go to the emergency department should rethink whether they really need to go to the emergency department or not, okay? If they feel well enough to stay home, they should contact their primary care doctor. If they don't have a primary care doctor, they should contact their county health department. So I know you guys span a couple counties, so they should call Tarrant or Johnson County Health Department, depending on who it is. The lab that will run the test is in Tarrant County. The hard part is, and this is a national problem, not a local problem, but there are not really as many tests as we would like, and so the limitation on testing is, it's hard to get a test. And so if your primary care doctor wants to order you a test, it's somewhat difficult for you actually to get that. But the important point is this, if you think you have the flu, or COVID-19, or any other sort of transmissible disease, staying home and isolating yourself for 14 days is the answer. Because if you go and get tested and you're positive, you're going to go home and isolate for 14 days. If you go home, and, or if you go and get tested and it's negative, you should probably still isolate yourself for 14 days. And so we talk a lot about testing, and it's great to know if you have the disease or not from an epidemiologic standpoint and a risk standpoint. But the flu does also transmit very easily, and so you should not be going out in public if you do have all of these same symptoms, whether it's due to COVID-19 or something else.
So the key point there, unless you're, you know, if you don't feel sick enough that you need to go get immediate medical care, the key is, and you're concerned about your symptoms, you think you might have COVID-19, call your physician. Your physician is the one that will decide whether or not you need to be tested.
That's great.
Give you advice about whether you need to self-quarantine or those sorts of things.
That's great.
Okay. All right. And the last question I have is, I just assume that all of our physicians have the protocols that include all the screening questions to ask?
So, so the Texas Medical Association has come out with a great resource document for, especially primary care physicians. The Tarrant County Medical Society has shared it with their physicians. I'm not sure, I honestly never really thought about whether the Johnson County Medical Society exists or not, but I would presume if they are members of the Tarrant County Medical Society, or, it's all through Texas Medical, and so we could, we could share it with them if they don't have it already.
Thank you.
Straight in the trash, on your nose, straight in the trash.
Store on the floor.
Store on the floor, yeah. Straight, that's, that's, it's a great, I was actually really excited that you had a bike to clinic, it's like right next to you, and then it's going to go scrape the trash.
Right, all right. Thank you. I'm proud to be an example. Are there...
It's okay. I was on Facebook, why I guess, hey, Robert, my face is...
Everybody else do something you should do, please. All right. Are there any other questions coming to...
One thing, you mentioned this, and it came right from that because I was there yesterday, and that's the break. Downstairs in the gym, the top was, we had out of 10 people, and I survived, but the bottom was full of kids playing basketball, and we're in close proximity, so I assume that we should do something about it.
So, so children are interesting, so I will tell you a question I want before I forget. Children are interesting. Children generally don't get extremely sick from COVID-19, and there's something to say that maybe they're not having the same mortality as everybody else, probably due to the fact that they deal with the other coronavirus diseases a lot more frequently. But kids are the ultimate Petri dish, right? Like, they rub their face, it's not, and they wipe it on everything, and then everybody picks it up.
There's no social distancing.
There's no social distancing. And so, so when you look at why, so, you know, Tarrant County Public Health had a call with all the local ISVs yesterday, and they've recommended, firmly recommended that everyone extend their spring break for two weeks, partly because everyone coming back from the spring break needs two weeks to go through their quarantine period. I would recommend, especially if you are in close contact, that you like that, that we do some steps to limit that. One of the things that's been kicked around, it's a mandatory thing in New York now, is they've taken their, their city fire code limits and they've cut it by a quarter, okay? That was a very aggressive maneuver, and they've formally done it. So if your building has a limit of 100 people, they've said your new limit is 25, and that's all that's allowed in. So that's one, again, another social distancing measure. We talked about places like the grocery store, figuring out a way to limit the amount of people that are in it so that people are away from anonymous points from each other. Those are the sorts of things that we talk about. So if you've got a bunch of kids downstairs confronting each other playing basketball, yeah, it's probably another great thing.
I will note, the city announced yesterday that we canceled the spring break camp that was going to be held at the brick for the three reasons, and because we wanted to act consistently with what the school district, they're actually worried then, and I hope Brian and Robert will probably have more to say about recommendations for the break.
I would just think that even if we shut that area down for at least two weeks, get
I would just think that even if we shut that area down for at least two weeks, did it deplete cleanliness like the schools do, it'd be better shut than are right now. As I said yesterday, which is a great example, I mean, it was four.
Yeah, well, and with school out, it would be.
Yeah, and the school being out is a really interesting point. The point of closing the schools is not to encourage playdates and camps and other sort of things. And I mean that, it was on the call yesterday, they said it's great if you close school, but if Six Flags stays open, they're all gonna be over there. And that is not, that is not the intended purpose of closing the schools. And that is part of the reason that the other instructions from Public Health was, figure out how to do home or remote learning, because these kids should be indoors learning and focused on school and not around playing with their friends, spreading disease. And again, you know, I understand the ridiculousness of me standing up here and saying, "Shut down kids' basketball games" when there's zero cases in the community. I know it sounds ridiculous, but it is likely that there are people out there in the community already. Just because you don't have a positive first case, you don't wanna be behind, all right? And that is the point.
Yeah, and I think the other thing we need to do is, as community leaders, we need to be very, very supportive of other institutions and decisions. I'm really proud of the school district, I know even before they made the call that they hit on Friday, they have considered, you know, other actions in the days before, and have really wrestled with what the right thing to do is, and have, you know, have been in close contact with the city and county officials. And so, you know, I really applaud what they've done. And then, you know, the folks that are having to make these tough calls for churches and other events and activities, they're gonna, they're gonna get it handed to them a little bit, you know, no matter what they do. Everybody knows their own organizations, and so, you know, I really just wanna be supportive of all of our community, state, community, bar crews, and businesses too for that matter, and want everyone to know that the city is a resource if you've got questions about what you need to be doing. All those calls can go into Tarrant County Public Health or the Johnson County Public Health folks. So I know we'll, I know we just wanna let everybody know the city is a great resource for that and can help you walk through those decisions that you need to make. And if you are an organization that decides to continue to offer a service or a program or whatever it is, we're happy to walk you through how to do that in the healthiest manner possible.
Yeah, if you look at Tarrant County, when they issued their declaration yesterday, it had a great list of items on the back, and they don't necessarily need to be implemented as a declaration. They're all just best practices already. So they talk about if you are in a central workplace, doing staggered shifts, or working from home, or other ways where you can limit the distance between people. And so there's steps that you should be taking, you know, whether it's emergency or not. The fact of the matter is, the country is now in a public health emergency. Just because a single locality doesn't have a lot of cases, doesn't mean that the country shouldn't take it seriously, so.
Thank you, anybody else?
I'd like to ask a couple of questions, and I don't really expect firm answers, but maybe you can give me ballpark answers. Considering that we take the recommended measures and people generally follow the guidelines that are put out by the state and by the city, we choose to have one of this. My concern is the mood of the public and the panic that is set in. Because I know everything I need to know about the disease because I check Facebook every day. I know it's absolutely just a cold, and I know it will absolutely kill you. I know all facets. What I would like more to know is, as a medical person, what event or sequence of events or scenario do you predict would signal the all fear or something to relax some of these things? One of the things I'm concerned about is canceling events or postponing events. If you're gonna cancel an event, okay, you cancel it. If you're gonna postpone an event, in this present scenario, with our attempt to slow the curve down, flatten it out, subsequently probably prolonging the period, what kind of timeframe are we looking at? And what kind of events will show that we're?
So, it's great, it is a great question. So, like I said, all I give is a ballpark, because at the end of the day, it is novel and we're working out the best guesses. You've probably heard of a doctor named Jeremy Faust, he's working with the president, he's the, something or other for the Infectious Disease Society of America. He has essentially said the, if you implement a bunch of measures, social distancing and isolation measures, I think the shortest run of the disease that we can look at is something like three weeks. If you do end up with a significant number of cases, and even if you are flattening the curve, we could be talking about a few months. And so, you know, I think generally what most people have been looking at is three to six months being a, let's lower down for a while and see how it goes. In terms of actually looking at data that suggests things are tailing off, there's two certain numbers that we look at. One is new cases per day, and one is active cases per day. And so when we talk about the curve, we're actually talking about active cases per day. But in reality, new cases per day is also there. So if you look at China, they went from a day where they were diagnosing 3,000 new patients per day, and then after implementing all of their extreme quarantine measures, they brought that down to zero cases per day. And so they are very much on the tail end of this, and this entire thing for them has lasted since early December. And granted, you have to ignore December because you've let it run rank in for a month, and then has lasted until March, so we're talking two, three months. The hard part is when we talk about social isolation and quarantine measures, the stronger they are, the quicker it gets resolved. And in the United States, we cannot or will not implement the measures that some of our Asian colleagues can do. And so we can anticipate a slightly longer course of resolution. So if you were to say to lock everyone in their homes for two months, you could probably get rabid. And I mean everyone in the entire country, and that's just not possible.
They have to stay out of the toilet for a while, don't they?
They would, at least there would be toilet group, yes. I really, you know, I wish I had an explanation for the toilet group thing, my understanding is, you know, the shelter's not working.
We have some significant once-in-a-lifetime events coming up, but May, we have a couple of really eagerly anticipated events coming up towards the end of this month.
Right.
The Be Healthy Fun Run, I know that's kinda been put on the balance today, whether we're gonna go forward with it, whether we'll postpone it, or whether we'll just forget about it. It's been the second year we canceled the event, we canceled this year.
There's one other great graph that I did bring up, but it was about the actual 1918 flu, which is if we're gonna compare this COVID-19 to anything, it's probably Spanish flu in 1918. There's a Taylor Two Cities graph that looks at Philadelphia and St. Louis, if you've seen it. And as everyone was coming back from World War I, they wanted to celebrate with parades and everything else, but the risk of the Spanish flu was coming through. St. Louis chose to heed the warning of Public Health and shut down their parade, perform social isolation and measures like that, whereas Philadelphia told everyone to F off and just did whatever they wanted. The graph is quite severe. Philadelphia had a significantly higher mortality rate of the Spanish flu compared to St. Louis. And it is an extremely hard decision to make, especially as a lot of people are just too close things that people are looking forward to. But in my opinion, it is harder to look people in the face as they lose family members from something that was potentially preventable. And so, again, you know, I personally am in a position where I'm coming up here and saying these things, and I could absolutely be wrong, and that is something I will live with later, but I would be much more remiss if I did not give the reality of this.
Well, and a really good fair point, something for us to think about is it's hard, it'd be hard for us to ask other organizations to cancel events or activities that mean a lot to them. We can't do the same thing, you know, on behalf of the city. That's a really good question to answer. I did have one more question. If we implement the kinds of things that you're talking about, is, you know, is that how we lower that 50% rate that we talked about earlier?
Oh, the number of new cases?
Yeah.
It's, so honestly, it's hard to say, because yes, that's the purpose, but when we talk about flattening the curve, if you remember your final day, it may just be the same number of people that spread out.
Okay, which is important too.
Which is also, it is, you know, I will tell you, if you have a chance to read through that maskable care document, it is not a fun thing to think about, in terms of evaluating people objectively, side by side, and deciding who benefits from caring, who doesn't. And that's exactly what's happening in Italy right now. They do not have ventilators or bed space to take care of all the patients that they have, and they're making extremely tough decisions very early in the course of people's disease, about whether or not they should have the resources spent on it or not. And in the United States, that's something unheard of, but it's absolutely something that we have to prepare for and hope that we never get to.
I will say this. My perspective, I'm 74-year-old, my perspective is gonna be much different than younger people. In my opinion, it's sure a significant amount, but that's it. It's just for the safety of all and not just the folks like myself. I agree, we should take the measure, even if we see that it did or did not, we've taken the measure and we've done what we're supposed to do, and I think it's the way to go.
Well, and all of us have that perspective, Ryan, no matter what age we are, because we're, you know, we all, almost everybody has somebody in their life that falls in one of the vulnerable population categories. And so you don't, it's not that you should just worry about getting the virus for yourself, but what that means for all the people in your life that you're close to. That, you know, there's, sure, you can isolate yourself once you know you're sick. The problem is what you do before you even realize it, why you may be able to transmit the virus. So that's one of those strong considerations to have today.
I agree, I agree with Ronnie. I think he makes a very strong point, especially in places like the break. And as we extend the isolation, that is just going to get more populated, more used. I have a question about any underlying issues within the virus. Is there anybody else additionally at risk? I don't wanna minimize that, but I've seen it, I've heard, but I'd like to know if there's anybody additionally at risk that have underlying issues that we didn't previously know, or?
I've been spending a lot of time reading about this. Everything that I've seen so far points to the big diseases that really put you at risk of death from all the other infectious diseases. So cardiovascular disease, respiratory disease, so especially things like COPD, chronic respiratory pomeran disease, even diabetes is an especially big risk factor, both type 1 and type 2 diabetes. And then cardiovascular diseases, those with chronic heart disease, heart failure, coronary artery disease in terms of heart attacks, strokes, that sort of thing. They're generally the sicker patients in general, Ryan. So I don't know if it's something specific to those diseases that's causing mortality, or just the fact that they're otherwise unwell. You may hear a rumor at some point about a specific type of medication called acinovirus, there's some theory running around there where a specific type of medication that a lot of people are on are putting people at increased risk compared to the virus because of the way the virus works. Everything I've read about it so far says it doesn't entirely have scientific merit, but it's the kind of thing that'll land on Facebook and go right there.
Right, and I also wanna be cautious and not sort of overspend on children sort of being overly resilient.
Yes.
Because it's very possible that they could have underlying conditions or something going on that they're not aware of yet. So I wanna be, you know, even though I realize that kids statistically, I think that we have to, that's even more so for the precautions that we have to take.
And generally, kids, as I understand it, kids may not get as sick or they have a lower mortality rate. That doesn't mean they're less likely to catch the infection to begin with.
That's correct.
Right.
And if anything, they're, it's harder for them to perform social isolation, social distancing.
The younger they are, yes, absolutely. All right, anyone else? Thank you so much for being here. It's, you know, without the information that you provided, it's hard to make the decisions you have to make, and then when you make them, you don't have a lot of confidence. So I feel better about what's before us, having the knowledge that you've provided this morning, thank you.
Thank you.
I hope that wasn't too boring for the big, but I felt like it was, it opened my eyes to a lot of things.
The only thing smart about Chinese parties.
And we do have a corner. And I guess we'll move right on to the action that we need to take regarding this virus. And that action is with how we're gonna deal with things here in the courthouse. It's been, I mean, I've been talking to several elected officials and what have you. First, we're gonna start off with the judge and Stacy and her office, I think that. Well, I was at the meeting yesterday with Chris and Judge Ayers, and that's you all's call, I feel. Okay, you handle that as you see fit.
We've already made the determination that for the next 30 days, any non-emergency or unconstitutional requiring hearing will be canceled. We have a SCAD order from the Supreme Court that directs us for 30 days from March 16th. Any hearing that doesn't have to be heard should be struck and continued. So we're in the process of continuing all those types of hearings, not only until 30 days, but we're gonna go after make first. So a lot of our hearings, even those that may be essential or are necessary, they can be done by Skype or by teleconferencing, they're gonna be done that way rather than have everybody hearing first. And looking at it yesterday, we only had one hearing next week that we need to hold for sure. And, but that's one that a lot of times the key witness is done through teleconferencing anyway. So that would probably be done by teleconference. But as far as court's concerned, we're gonna move almost everything past May or February.
Okay. So that kind of, what we've been talking about in the other offices is, is walking it up and them up and putting drop boxes out in the lobby or at their doors for people to put paperwork in. I read this Duke County deal, this is a legal question. I saw where by phone, people could make appointments to meet with the people somewhere. To me, that's a fine line, you all answer this. I, we talked, I talked a little bit about this to Chris and him yesterday down there, and they said what's good for one is good for all. Because I said let the officers at their discretion meet with whoever, or make contact with that person out there, outside. You tell us how we need to handle that legally. Because he said if we let one in, you gotta let them all. But now this said in a specific meeting place, Duke County's deal.
Well, I think it's simplest to have a policy, and that's what our district's doing, for instance, and Chris may have touched on this in your meeting yesterday, but.
Not really.
District-wide, we've made the determination that we're not dealing with, with people in a face-to-face setting. Attorneys we may be dealing with, but pro se litigants, I know, we'll deal with them over the phone, and payments or documents, we'll have those mailed to us. And especially given the order that's come down from the Supreme Court. So I think it's simplest to do a across-the-board policy for that office.
Okay, that's, so in other words, you can scratch that part of Duke County's deal, it's what I was getting at.
Well, the Supreme Court in that SCAD order has extended statute limitations, deadlines for filings by that same 30 days. So it's kind of no harm, no foul as far as continuing everything 30 days, because even if you can't get in the courthouse to do that, you have, 16th, 15th, April 15th, 16th, to go ahead and file this, plus we're gonna authorize people to file by email or fax, which we don't normally do. But it's their responsibility then to follow up to make sure Stacy's received the email or has received the fax that has been filed.
Okay, I wasn't really referring to you, I would have been referring to like the assessor, the county clerk, and that. It's what I took Duke County's deal to mean, that they, if they, they're gonna have a place for the county clerk, for Shelley to go out and meet with somebody outside of her office.
Yeah, I just want you to be sure to understand you're not gonna in any way impair or affect proceedings or business of the court by closing the courthouse however you want to, because there's safeguards in place for it.
Well, I just, Chris, when I asked Chris about this about then, he said what was good for one was good for all. And he said you either gotta do it one way or the other. So, and I just read Duke County's deal a minute ago, and they had an alternative there to go out and meet somewhere, and I didn't know if that was, I really didn't like that, because, I mean, I didn't know how to handle it.
Do you know, we do have appointments with two couples that's coming in to get marriage licenses for their weddings this weekend. We've already allowed that, which one should be here this morning, so, I mean, I don't know what else to do.
Well, David's got taxes to collect, there's things, I mean, and I've talked to Rudy yesterday about the Dropbox deal for people to come in.
We found these that are like, are almost $60. We could get a dozen of these and have them put on the walls down there by the sheriff's office, and have our, you know, each office's name on there, and people wouldn't even have to come on up into the lobby. They could just, you know, we could block that off and just keep people just at that area, and that's it, if you want.
I'm good with however you all wanna do it. I mean, you know, that, I think that's a great idea, that allows, we could block something off and allow Rudy and them, he, I mean, there's gonna be traffic into the sheriff's office.
Right.
You got a place you could put it where it'll have the camera on it?
Yeah.
That hallway down there does have it.
Yeah, with the camera on, that way.
But if you have that open, what's gonna stop them from coming on up to the office anyway? I mean.
I think we can block that off.
Yeah, Stephen mentioned blocking that off.
Well, I just have a lot going on in my office. Well, I just have a lot going on in my office right now. I can't tell these people they can't have their due process of their 30-day protest period or their extra time. And all of it that we do, we have to do in person with them and we have to ask questions and get signatures. So I'm going to have to figure out something if they can't come in.
Help those guys.
Well, it would appear that, you know, the county officers all have discretionary powers, you know, to run their offices. And it would appear that in a case like that, you could still maintain the protocols necessary to keep your people safe. Like perhaps a distance from the person or, you know.
Set up appointments, because you do, right?
For protests, we have appointments. But, I mean, we just sent out, people's assessment time was up Monday. We've got a whole ton of them that haven't been in. They're going to be in between now and April 15th. And after that, they're getting arbitraries and they'll all be in then because there's penalties. I don't, I mean, they have to look at the paperwork and they have to sign it, so.
Well, let me ask you this, how do you want it? I mean, this is all about the safety of you and your employees. Is what it's about.
What, are you getting any information from the state about?
Um, I, my computer is filled with emails from everybody in every county in the state at the moment of what they're all doing.
If you, the assessor's office, a protocol.
They're doing things over the phone, but there's a lot of stuff we can't do over the phone.
I didn't know if they'd come up with, they're going to waive a date where they can get it finished or?
Well, as far as the assessment part, you, you're pretty much going to have to stay on your timeline. If you don't, that's going to throw everything off and budgets off. And I'm already in trouble because I can't get mill levies and things balanced as it is by October 1st. So there's, they're not, as far as I've been told, no, they're not going to extend any of that, so. And then again, that brings up another question. What about my visual inspection guy? He's out in the field. He's too muddy to go out in the country right now. So that leaves him going in Winoka or here in town. Do we want him going door-to-door, talking with people and doing his job? Or we need to make a decision on what he needs to do?
That's your call.
So.
Yeah. I agree. I mean, it's your whatever.
He can do it safe, you know, knock on the door, stay outside, talk, you know.
Right, right.
That's what we ought to figure out, is make ourselves not touch it.
I mean, we're going to, we're going to continue just without the public is my opinion of the deal. So employees are going to be in and out, elected officials in and out. I mean, we, as of right now, I don't feel like that we should just completely stock business. Well, right, so, I mean, we're going to have some risk involved.
But just, give us common sense.
I will add this, I saw this this morning, and it just goes along with that video. These tests are becoming available this week and we're going to, as what I understand. And there's going to be a huge spike of infected people once they get enough tests to, is what their prediction is. And it's going to make it more, people are going to be more aware and more, you know.
Right.
Yes, scared for them. But I, I just, all we can do right now is I just want to try to make it as safe as, as we possibly can. And so, Renata, I mean, we work, I mean, I'm all about you taking care of your business however you see fit as long as we don't jeopardize any of the other people.
Right.
So, but I think it's, we need to know how you want to do it. Do you want to set up a conference room somewhere that can be cleaned thoroughly, thoroughly or something? And have meetings and knows what these people you have to meet with face-to-face? Or, and keep them out of your office and one person or however many it takes to meet with them? How do you handle that?
I just don't know whether they're in, yesterday, we only had two people actually come in because they all thought we were shut down. So, see, I just don't know, you know, until they call or contact us somehow, I don't know if they're, what people are thinking.
Well, we're going to presume.
And we can put, we can put something in the newspaper explaining how you're going to handle this too, which would help.
Right, well, we're going to presume that you're going to set up from this point forward, appointments over the phone first.
Right, right.
And my question is, is do we need to set up a room here for you to have those meetings in? Do you want them in your office? Do?
To spread it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean.
And maybe if they're calling.
Well, yeah, we could do it that way. And if we can get them to call and the things we can do over the phone, we'll go that way. But there's, and maybe some of it where we need to have signatures, like ad cards, we can mail those. But where you're asking them questions for homesteads and for, you need a lot of personal information to do freezes and that kind of thing. You know, I guess we'll just see as it arises if maybe we can put a hold on them getting a signature and try and catch them later after all this is over. I, I don't know. If we can do a lot of it on the phone, we're going to try.
Okay.
What we can.
Well, I think, I think that you have, I should have some type of idea, some type of policy that, so you're, tell everybody the same thing.
Right, right.
And, and we need a plan for you to set up somewhere in your office. I don't, that's your call, where you want to do it. But we'll make it available for you to have a place if that's what you see fit.
Well, there might be a few things, like protests, we're going to have to. And we'll, we'll try and get them to agree to do it over the phone because we can't do it that way. But we have some people who want to hold those papers in their hand and look at them and.
Well, it is not I want.
I know, I realize, so, I know.
I mean, we're past that stage.
And a lot of these people's thinking is probably going to change over the next few weeks.
That's what I'm kind of hoping, yeah.
But Oklahoma City's not giving you any directives at all.
Is there any other officers that would measure, that needs to do business kind of like she does? Or you guys all want to?
I'm probably the only one right now that this is the busy time.
We have to, but we have things in place already.
Do what?
We have things in place already. We have ways that make payments without making contact already. Our next, we could be really busy.
Okay, so, I mean, if we want to do something now or if we want to call a special meeting in a day or so and determine if you need some time to figure out, Renata, I mean.
Come up with a little plan?
Yeah.
Well, that's, I was reading.
Do you think you're going to need a room?
The.
Should I all come up with something here?
The Assessors Association's president sent out an email yesterday asking every county to let them know what they were doing. And pretty much it sounds like everybody's just locking down their courthouse and doing what they can do. But then there are some that are staying open, they're a public entity and they work for the people and they're staying open. So, you know, I don't know.
Well, we're not talking about locking the courthouse completely out, you know. There'll still be able to be a phone conversations.
Right.
We just got to figure out how to help you carry on with what you need to do.
Well, we're trying to, I mean, you're right, David.
And until they start calling or coming in or something, I don't know. So I don't know how many people, they might just assume that we're not doing anything and not come in.
Right, a lot of people already assume that.
Yeah, yeah.
But, but here's what I'm saying, it is, those people that call in, do whatever, it's, we need you to tell them how you're going to do it, not how they want to do it.
Right, right.
And in that way, we're all know what you're wanting to do.
I just don't know.
And support you in that effort.
I don't know what kind of number I'm dealing with because I haven't talked to them yet. Because their time period isn't up until, well, part of them, the first of April, first part of April.
So.
But if you can create a plan, like say, whether it's going to be one or 50, if you feel like you need to meet with them, like Randy said, in a separate room, so we can get that set up. And then like, you call the shots.
We just, what we need to do, we can make a resolution, proclamation, whatever this is going to be called, is, is we need to have it specified in there so we can support your decisions and move on. We know what's going to happen and everybody knows how it's going to happen, David.
So if we decide in our office to shut down separate essential personnel, what kind of leave do our deputies take? Is there a special leave?
That's going to be your call, but here's what I'm going to tell you, I was told yesterday. You got an employee with no sick leave, you got an employee with 2,000 hours of sick leave, you treat them the same. So in other words, you're going to pay both of them and not count the sick leave against the one.
Okay, good.
Is, they said that's, they said, that's, the auditor told them that. Chris is the one that made that statement, that the auditor said treat them both the same. So that's your only alternative there.
That's good.
And Renata, you got to do business, but we got to keep the spread down and keep our hands slow. And that's what we got to figure out how, I mean, you best know your business.
And. And I'm just quickly going to go through the rest. I mean, I think it's kind of, we're talking about locking down these offices with commissioners' office, county clerks, treasurer's office with boxes outside. Essentially, your deal is determined up here. The 911 is going to get a box outside and we don't want any traffic through there. The, I talked to Ashley last night. She thought that everything could be over the phone, whatever, and a box out there for paperwork from law enforcement, EMT. A lot of those would be high-risk people anyway that don't need to, because I have not figured out what we're going to do if we would get a positive in the dispatch. So to me, I mean, we, that's got to function. So we've got to take every precaution we can to keep it out of there.
We ought to contact Lippert or Alzada County, Garfield County, they have the same problem as us. And if they have it, maybe we can send some over there. If we have it, maybe they just.
That's, Ashley's already did that. They can transfer some calls, but still, we've got to be as vigilant as we can to keep it out of there. And, yeah, those steps are already in place. So. And, and I'm open for any other ideas. And it sounds to me like maybe we need to table this deal and let Renata and we work on a solution or a plan.
Well, or we could just try new things by phone for now until something comes up. Then could we figure out what we need to do, I mean.
I think we ought to prepare for a room in this courthouse, whether it's just a small room or not, that we gather at to sign it with people instead of bringing them into your offices or do it one here and one there, one place that's clean, that we do all our outside signing, verbal, whatever.
The visitation cell, the visitation cell has a glass.
It doesn't matter if that's the same, that's what I go to you.
Yeah, I think we're going to have to UPS and FedEx just drop off at the door, drop by our drop boxes there. Yeah, we could have them just drop it there.
How about today, you call some other assessor, just sitting on the courthouse, this is going on.
Right, right. Um, I don't know how long of a time period you're looking at talking about, but the end of May?
How long it takes?
We are going to be doing oil and gas protests, so.
I want this to be open-ended, there's no need to change in this till we get the all-clear sign.
Right, right. And since we don't know how long it's going to last.
No, it's been talked about, I think in August.
Right.
And the protest things, we'll just have to do like, they're suggesting six feet apart and, yeah.
The best I knew, and I don't know, I wasn't, I watched that yesterday, so I wasn't paying close attention. But his guesstimate, he did say on there, and I understand, a three to six-month period before the all-clear sign. Is, was his opinion that, and I can understand that.
Couple of weeks, about how bad it'll get. I mean, every day it changes, it's all new.
Yeah.
All new country we're around in.
It'll definitely be two weeks because those tests aren't, they're going to, the more readily available the tests get, the more we're going to have. And then, then you've got the, the two weeks after that to, so I, I can't foresee anything in the next two to three months with an all-clear sign.
So you just warn them until further notice or how are you?
Well, once we pass this deal, I, and I think it needs to be enacted. There's no need to have a meeting every month or every week on it. And once we feel comfortable that, that we can go back to the business as normal, then I think that's when we.
Can stop.
I mean, we might as well be in it for the long haul or the right way. And that's the, and nobody knows that right way now. So. But let's, today's Wednesday. You want to have, you, have I got a motion we table this away?
How long can you say when you're going to be here?
I mean, because of Renata.
Right.
Can we?
Till tomorrow.
Till tomorrow?
We could call an emergency meeting every day, I'm pretty sure.
Well, I mean, if everybody else, I mean, we need to work with Renata however we can. But if everybody else is set in stone or pretty much how they need to do it, I think tomorrow would be.
How do we vote on a resolution, it's not.
No, I said tomorrow would be the latest because we've already behind the ball the way it is. And we're going to have, everyone is going to have employees wanting to know what, what are we going to do? And calls from public, I mean, I've already, we all receive calls, but, I mean.
My employees are working because we have a deadline, so we don't have choice.
We need to work.
We're pushing it even with everybody being healthy, so.
We aren't shutting employees off. I mean, we aren't changing a thing.
We might could release that, it's just we'll close courthouse to the public until further notice. We could at least maybe release that and then we could do our details in another.
Yeah, we could have a resolution that we just close the courthouse to the public.
No, Randy, just, just for clarification, if the commissioners have not issued their declaration of an emergency, and I believe that's probably on your agenda for today, right?
Yes, it is.
You could do that without addressing each and every detail about where it's specific.
But where does that leave us as far as, as that declaration doesn't state what we're doing in the courthouse?
No, it doesn't.
I mean, what does that, what are the options of, is what I'm saying if we declare that?
Well, I think it's up to you all, your decision, of course. But if you're going to do that, you can do that without working out each and every detail about the mechanics of, you know, where the drop boxes are going to be and where one officer's going to meet with their constituents.
Do we have that?
We can declare it and still work on it basically.
Yes.
Well, okay, but can we have that, declare that? And can we just shut the courthouse to the public till we make those decisions?
Yeah, that's within your power to do.
Okay.
Right, this is the one that Ethan sent.
Yeah.
Have you seen it?
Oh, I forgot to call Ethan. But he wants to be. He wanted to be on, he wanted to hear what went on this way. Well, but, okay, wouldn't the proper way to do is to table number three, go move to. Well, but, okay, wouldn't the proper way to do is to table number three, go move to number four?
Which one's number four?
Oh, you don't have it. Discussion and possible action regarding the corona, coronavirus in the courtroom. Just table it for right now. The next one is the declaration.
I think so.
Do that. And then with that declaration, entertain a motion to close courthouse to the public until we work out details.
That, that seemed to be the proper way to do it.
Okay, all right. Um, I need, I'd entertain a motion to table number three on the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
On favor, aye. Motion carries. Number four, discussion and possible action regarding the emergency proclamation. And here's how that reads. Whereas of March 18th, 2020, due to multiple cases of COVID-19 being reported in the state of Oklahoma, United States, Centers, Centers for Disease Control and Prevention have identified the potential public health threat posed by COVID-19 as high, both globally and within the United States. In addition, on March 14th, 2020, the President of the United States declared a national health emergency in the United States as a result of the national spread of COVID-19. Likewise, on March 15th, 2020, the Governor of the State of Oklahoma issued Executive Order Number 2020-07, declaring that an emergency in all 77 counties of Oklahoma. And whereas immediate attention is required to protect public health, reduce further damage, ensure public safety and render emergency relief. Whereas we, the Board of County Commissioners of Woods County, Oklahoma, do find that the aforementioned conditions constitute a threat to the safety and welfare of the county and create an emergency public health situation within the meaning of Section 68, 3.3 Oklahoma Emergency Management Act of 2003 as amended now. Therefore, we, the Board of County, uh, County Commissioners, acting under the powers vested in us to do hereby declare Woods County to be entitled to act, relieve and assist and do hereby direct to implementation of the County Emergency Operations Plan. And witness thereof, I have errant to my hand as, oh, that's the, that's it. That's the, yeah, tested. Do I have a motion to?
I'll make the motion. We accept the emergency proclamation for Woods County.
Second, on favor? Okay, that is done now. Okay. Do, within, how do we handle that? Could we not do that about closing a courthouse to the public legally? Cause it's not on the agenda.
That is part of, well, I don't know. I thought it was part of the declarations, but maybe it's not, cause he sent both those.
Well, we, we gave, we have the ability, I guess, to do what we need to do through this declaration.
And I, I assume it's, it's addressed in your emergency operations plan, which the declaration-
Well, it said here, we have the ability to do what's best for them. I mean, in that. So, does that, we need another, are we good to make another motion? I'm asking, or I don't wanna do?
I, I, in my opinion, I don't think it's necessary because-
Okay.
What you've just done is, is implement-
Okay.
Your emergency procedures under Title 63.
Okay. Well, under this then, uh, as, we can assume and the public can assume or will, should, is now duly notified that for the time being, the courthouse is closed to public.
And I have a public note that we can put in the paper for the immediate, pre immediate release that states that.
And we will post it on the doors?
And it has all our phone numbers.
I was gonna say, if you have our phone numbers, are you gonna put emails also or just phone numbers? And it needs to be big enough that they can see it.
And the, cause this is going in the newspaper too. So we could put those, if you would like, I can go put those on there before we send it to.
Or if they can call, we can always still send them over.
Okay, I've got a mo, I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Oh, second. On favor, aye, we're done.